Call a meeting to order, if I please stand, we'll say a word. Have a look and have a prayer. Doctor, you're here, please.
Please place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our heads, please. Much gracious heavenly Father, we do thank you for allowing us to gather today, heavenly Father. The Commissioners read, heavenly Father. Father, just go with us and open our minds, heavenly Father, that whatever we say and do is best for the county, heavenly Father. Father, just bless our soldiers, bless our sick, heavenly Father. And Father, we just thank you for Jesus who died to give us life eternal. Father, just go with us now, lead, guide, and direct us in the name you say and do, in Jesus' name, amen.
You guys completed claims, men?
Yes, sir. Make a motion to approve.
Sick. All forever say aye. This is. Happy this morning.
I'm good, how are you? I didn't see anything else, I gave you guys.
We had a meeting the other day, a virtual meeting, with Maggie, and we listened to the state, what they're handing down. And I asked her to come in and present what we heard the other day. Everyone?
You want me to go ahead and start? Would you like to go ahead and start? Yeah, just pass it. Everybody, there's enough copies for everybody.
You got them all together?
Yeah, there's two different.
Two different ones. Mary, what's your? You might want to have her introduce the young lady that's with her. Attention, the back, the security guard.
Well, you, this is per your request. This is Janet Ryan, our Chairman of the Board. And then, free questions? So, what I'm going to discuss about is the Senate Bill 4 that is related to the Governor's Public Health Commission. They have been working on this for the last year and a half on increasing funding for the public health. We have what's called a local health trust and a local health maintenance fund. And our funding hasn't been changed in over 30 years, the state said. So they're trying to increase it to more money. So they had it passed in legislation at the end of April, so it's just hitting bad timing because of budgets. But they had asked legislation for 75 million, which got passed from 2024 for public health. And that's going to be split between the whole state of Indiana. And then in 2025, it's 150 million for public health. Just some statistics about Indiana. We are ranked 45th in the nation for smoking and tobacco use, 46th for obesity, 41st for childhood immunizations, and 45th for public health funding. So this is why they reached out to legislation to get more funding from the state. So the, I have a statistic that 90 out of 94 county health departments is below the national average percentile of funding. The lack of public health funding contributes to high rates of infant mortality, smoking, chronic disease, higher medical costs, and decrease in life expectancy. Life expectancy for Indiana is two years below the national average. The difference between the Indiana county with the highest life expectancy and the lowest is almost nine years. Our county is the second highest percentile for vulnerability and has a life expectancy of two to four years lower than the average of Indiana. As of this morning, I have a rough figure that we were told, or I have found on a PowerPoint spreadsheet, but we haven't got the official letter yet of how much our funding's going to be. But our first year, we're looking at receiving $422,000, almost 123 extra, and in 2025, we'll receive 845,000. And that'll be for every year after that. And stop me if you have questions.
I got a question for you right there. And this is one of the concerns we always have to look at, what future spending will have to occur down the road. And the way, we were pretty well told the other day, when the Governor and the state wants to work with us right now, it's pretty sure that they are going to go ahead with it and continue to carry on.
For the next two years, it's a definite, we'll have it. Every, it's biannual, so every two years, they'll have to go back and request it through legislation. There, I'll get to some of that, too. But from what we were told at the state, it, they don't see why we shouldn't be receiving this funding every year. We have to meet certain goals, and they're going to present that to legislation.
It is kind of crucial that we do get signed up right away.
Yeah, I'll get to that, too. Yeah. So what the state has also said, if the, there's a lot of counties that don't opt into this funding, and the counties that do, the counties that do take it, might receive an additional funding from the counties that didn't. So they'll split it around the first year. So we might be looking at 422,000 the first year, and then we'll receive the full amount the second. So we might receive a lot more money in the first year, it's going to be worth anticipating. So I have, the first year is required from the county Commissioners and the County Council, a three-year average of the health department's budget. And I have those broken down every year, if you guys would like to know. But the three-year average for 2024, you guys need to maintain, is at least $461,000 to be able to receive this additional funding. The second year, the counties are required to not do a three-year average, but it'll be at 20% of the health department's budget out of the Governor's funding. The only thing is, they request you not to cut the budget for the health department in case this funding does go away. Then you're not cutting jobs that you're going to have to be coming back in a couple of years, if you're like, oh, we need to fill these positions. So they don't want you to cut anything. So you, if you don't decide to opt in in 2024, you can opt in in 2025. As the Commissioners, you guys must opt in by September 1st. If they opt in after that, we're not considered. So they say you can do it anytime between now and September 1st. I was told they don't know how that opting's going to look as of right yet, but they're working on that. The health department, we have to submit a budget sheet by September 1st, just like you guys, seeing what we're going to be spending it on. We will be notified from the health department by November 1st if we do receive this funding. So if you guys don't take the funding, we will stay out of regular funds for the local health maintenance and the local health trust. And we only receive, for the local health trust, around 19,000 a year. And the local health maintenance, we only receive 33,000 a year. We also, for the maintenance and the trust, have a carryover, but that's just funding that we didn't spend the previous year. This is not a guarantee, they said, this is just an additional appropriation. Just like if funding wants to get cut with, if we hire a bunch of people and this funding wants to get cut, they told us to, it's just like anything else. You know, grants run out, you just have to tell their employees, this funding is not a guarantee, we have to do it by year, year, year. So the state has repealed the local health trust account, and that new name will be called the Local Public Health Service Fund. So it's going to be a totally different fund name. The money in the local health public service fund at the end of the fiscal year does not revert back to the county's general fund. That money will stay with the health department, and that's broke in the legislation. The health department will be required to submit reports twice a year, and are called key performance indicators. So we have to be showing the state we're using this money the way they're wanting it done. The local health department will be required to submit an annual report demonstrating how the dollars were spent. We are going to do this every year with the local health trust and local health payments, so this is nothing new for us. There is a 10% cap on this funding for land, building, and vehicles. So if we don't, if we put 10% aside every year, we can build that up to potentially do a building, land, anything for the health department. I just have to specify in the annual report that we're not using this money that year, and we're building it up. The state says there's no one-size-fits-all when it comes to spending this money for the health department, as long as it goes for the four public health services. And the sheet I gave you, it's front and back, it says like a 60-40 split. It tells all the, yes, it tells all the four public health services they're wanting. The 60% is things that we're going to be required to do, and the 40% is already jobs we have, and we can just add to it. And I'll go into that as well. So the 60-40 split, though, is the 40% of the funding or less can go towards environmental health. So we can hire an additional person for Chris to do environmental complaints. There is a requirement to have a lead risk inspector, and that could be part of a new environmental person's job if we hire him. There is a food protections program that our food inspector would like to start using, but that is a costly fee every year. And then 60% or more can go towards, a lot of it's towards the nursing rate, like communicable diseases, but tobacco use, maternal-child health, anything towards that, and we have that list running. So the reason why we're seeking out this additional funding that is being offered to us, is our health department can only do so much with the funding that we get from the public, the counties, their county health department. So 400,000 at least goes towards salaries, insurance, our health officer, longevity, overtime, care. That doesn't leave us a whole lot of money to spend towards services that need to be offered. If we do hire new positions for the health department, it's written in legislation, we have to post it for 30 days. We can do interviews, but we just cannot accept a position for 30 days, which I think is not available. There are some statistics for Washington County, I have a few of them, but teen pregnancy for Washington County is a 6.5 over the state average of a 4.9. Smoking during pregnancy for Washington County is like 12.1 over the state average. Any tobacco use during pregnancy is 17.4 over the state average of 10.7. Our county, a lot of deaths for the last five years are in an average, and we have an average of 330 people passed every year. That's not dying in our county, but they die outside, out of county, but they live within ours. In 2022, we've seen that highest number of deaths for our county, though, and they were, a lot of them were contributed to accidents, drug overdoses, and suicides. Washington County, between the span of five years, had nine infant mortality deaths. The infant mortality rate for the state is at 6.8, and Washington County is at 5.6. Is it 5.6?
5.6.
Do you have, a lot of this is just webinar stuff that we've been listening to for the last several months. They've just been pushing this more and more and more. They would like to see all counties opt into this funding to increase public health for the whole entire state. Do you have questions on what I reviewed? Do you have any questions on what I mentioned?
I got a lot of questions.
I'm sure. And there's a, the other thing I handed you guys, there are the core services, and a lot of that is towards the key performance indicators. So there's like a shall, the state's saying, or should be required. I do know there is a preparedness person we will be required to have. It's at least a part-time person, or we can have a full-time. If we do a part-time, we might substitute them to have another job due to make it a full-time position.
You sit on the board, right?
Yes.
What's your feeling on this?
I don't see anything that'd be wrong with that. I mean, it's going to help the people of our county, which is what we want to do. It sounds like that our, our state, our county, is below average in so many things. I love the idea of increasing things like preparedness. I worry about water, you know, that's like lifeblood, you know? And I, that's why I'm on the Washington County Health Department, because I feel like it's such an important issue for us.
There's so many things, I know Maggie worked hard since last week we went over this.
And a lot of it's the exact same things.
It is, and at the same time, we want everything. We want Washington County to have everything everybody else has got. And I find very little short run with it. I would like to know more about land.
It, that's, I was just telling her a little bit ago, too. We talked about that last week, too. It's going to be rocky the first couple of years, just trying to figure out, okay, is this best where this money goes? Or should we put a little bit more towards here? It's just going to be, not a touching of it, just trying to figure out what is actually best for the health department? What's best for the community and everything?
And this, this has been one of the troubles. I mean, we've hunted for money ever since I've been a Commissioner. And to me, it's kind of hard to turn down something that's offered to you. It may not work, it may fizzle out, but any chance we can get to improve our county, I think, so we need to look for it. And this is an asset. And I, I feel like it's a good program to start with.
And I know, early on, when they were talking about this in webinars, they said only four out of the 92, 94 counties did not meet the requirements on the funding from the counties. They said ours did, we already made that match of an average that they, we've contributed. I know we are already guaranteed that at some.
I know they called back and figured where I think it was, and wanted to know, and I hadn't heard nothing about it then, and that's, that's why we did go ahead this week and done it. And, questions?
Did you say that all of so much of it could be used for salaries?
So the 60-40?
New hires?
No, the 60-40 split is only 40% or less can go towards environmental stuff, like the food, or Chris's inspections, vector control, anything like that. We can go up to 40, we just, or below, we just can't go above 40%. The rest can go towards the nursing, communicable diseases, some internal child health, that kind of stuff. It will pay salaries, it will pay insurance, we can offer benefits, everything that we already have in the health department, or as a county employee.
I guess what I'm asking is, if you put all this money towards personnel, insurance, so on, so forth, does that not take away from the programs that you're going to?
Well, we're only looking, I wouldn't say only. Right now, we were just considering making our part-time nurse, potentially full-time nurse, if she opts into it, a prepared, like again, a preparedness person, and we're hoping to have them be also media person to go do like kind of public relations for us, marketing, anything, getting on the radio with F Y, anything like that. Our health educator, that would be like a school health nurse liaison, anything that we can do on health education to have classes for the public. And then an environmental health specialist, and they would be a lead risk inspector that is required. And then we were thinking, if not one, two vector control interns for the summer, so that would alleviate Chris from doing mosquito spraying, then he can just focus on subject complaints, anything along those lines. And then if we have the interns, then we're not having to have a place just dedicated in the office for them. They'd be out and about spraying all summer long. So really, a lot of this won't go towards salaries because we're not looking at a ton. And if you're looking at four salaries, maybe 300,000, like 350, and that's including insurance, care, that kind of stuff. So we still would have a lot of money to go towards services. Again, if we hired vector control, we would need more new equipment, a lot more spray than what we already have. As for 2023, we only have $3,000 to spray for mosquitoes, and you're looking at a huge county to spray with only $3,000. So we could dump a lot towards that. We're looking at billboard ads just to promote the health department saying, hey, come in during school time, get your, before school, get your children shots up to date. We could do tobacco, like talking about teen pregnancy, or women being pregnant, like smoking during pregnancy, anything along those lines.
When you talk about, I know this is not your area of expertise, because Chris does this all the time. When you talk about spraying for mosquitoes, give me an example where he might go to spray for mosquitoes.
Again, yeah, I don't necessarily know, but I do know he goes, it would've been like Wermes's, he goes down that creek past the...
Johnson Street?
Yes, it's past the Crown Hill Cemetery. He goes all around Salem, but once you do a lot of those, it kind of depletes how much we have to actually use, so. He could spread, get a lot of people spread out, we could go to Hartsburg, we can go to Campbell'sburg, spray, peek in, Salem, of course. But that's just one of the many things we can put the funding towards.
Well, I know for fact, due to my involvement on the plan commission, and in fact, just to give you an example, I think in 2021, there were over 70 new home builds in the county, which some people would think, how can that be? That doesn't include people updating their septic systems and just continuous maintenance, maintenance and inspections. So I know, I'm not saying the rest of you in the office aren't busy, too, but I do know Chris has been overwhelmed and has mentioned getting some help because we have many other problems. One in particular, if it's been, well, it's one of my pet peeves. When you drive around the countryside, our beautiful countryside, you see a nice home that's well-kept and everything, and then you drive by a place who happens to have about 40, or 50, or 60 bags of household trash right at their front door. And I went by one here just a few weeks ago, been keeping an eye on, and a couple little kids running around outside playing in the yard. But these are things that I would like to see with maybe the addition of another employee to help Chris that better address, because this is just uncalled for in this day and age, to have happiness going on, and it's unsightly, and it's definitely not sanitary, it's a health hazard, and it doesn't do much for economic growth.
Again, we just have to stay within the parameters of that 60-40, but yeah, I don't see why we couldn't do that. The other thing, though, I want to mention, and I talked to you about this film, our office space is going to be limited on staff, like where we can put staff. So I will need help in figuring that out. We want to take advantage of this funding, but we only have limited space. So I will need assistance on that.
This is typical of when you get something free, when you get extra money, it seems to create other problems than it will, so.
We, I mean, kind of, we have an idea of where to go. In theory, that environmentalists shouldn't be in the office very much. Just come in, do paperwork. Again, the vector control people, if they're summer interns, they should be out spraying all day long, or just during parts of it. A preparedness person, we were thinking of kind of making cubicles in the nursing clinic area. And then our full-time health nurse, well, she's part-time, she would already have a desk within the nursing office. We would just have to find a spot if we were hiring additional employees.
Rome once was built in a day, give me time. I'm working on that right now.
But I just wanted to make you guys aware that that is something we're going to need assistance from.
We kind of touched on that the other day.
Yes, we did.
Let's get further along, where we have to worry about a roof.
And again, we won't be spending 845,000, or whatever we get, in the first year. We're only receiving half that funding, because they know the counties won't meet all the goals in our first year because of the...
There's going to be some pain, we don't know.
Okay.
But I think we need to get a start on it.
I mean, there's a good start already on this, so.
President?
Absolutely, or we come in when you get the funding.
Like I said, we've worked too hard to get where we are. We've got a ways to go, but this is crazy, if we turn it down.
I agree.
That's my opinion.
I do know, I have heard kind of rumors that there are several counties that are turning it down. So if they do, again, that's additional funding we can possibly do.
And it does change everything? And there is going to be counties that do turn it down? But at the same token, that does give us a better chance for more money down the road.
Sure.
And that's something we've got to look at, too. It may not happen, we know what the minimum's going to be right now.
Yes, you know what the minimum is, we could increase that funding.
Oh, we could increase more?
Yes.
That is a possibility. And I don't see it affecting anything in our budget now, as long as we set it up right.
It should not affect anything, no. Again, the first year is a three-year average of the health department's budget, and you guys already meet that requirement. The second year, you just have to provide 20% of the public health funding. So whatever we receive from the state funding, you just have to contribute 20%, if they don't recommend you don't, down to 20%. Because if this funding was to get wiped out, you don't want to eliminate all your staff and then come back filling those positions.
Anybody else? Thank you, ladies. I think I appreciate, I appreciate you coming in with moral support. I think you could have a pat you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, you too.
Another discussion?
Yes, sir.
We don't write it down, and she'll probably have to come back in. I'm favored to go on ahead with it. Okay. Truck bid openings? Truck bid openings?
I've got, I've got.
Got you.
Apparently, there's only one bid submitted from Kentucky Truck Sales in Jeffersonville. Let's see, the correspondence indicates, that's from David Miners, regarding tandem dump truck bid, 2025, freight miner tandem axle chassis. It's got some other specifications in here. Sale price is $209,943 per unit. Chassis delivery will be second or third quarter of 2024.
I recommend accepting the bid for review.
A lot of people are so backlogged, they're just really not looking to get further backlog. They're not interested. And the late twenty twenty-four is the chassis delivery. Then you're looking at another four or five months for the bed to be put on. So that's gonna be mid-twenty-five probably, early or mid-twenty-five.
Was that three of them?
Yep. That's roughly a thirty thousand increase from last time, if that's just signs of inflation.
A motion to accept?
Yeah.
Second, break of motion, Tom, second, call the favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. Resolution amending, update.
Edit.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution amending and updating the edit plan. Uh, when the State Board of Accounts comes in each year to do its audit of Washington County's accounting, uh, they like to see that we have a rev, a plan essentially outlining how we intend, or how we have, how we intend to spend, uh, Economic Development Income Tax Funds. Uh, this, uh, resolution is both looking back at twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. We're in the middle of twenty twenty-three, so, and it also looks forward, uh, for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. For twenty twenty-two, edit funds, gross edit fund was one million, ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars uh, pursuant to our previous plans. Uh, in twenty twenty-two, we spent eighty-five percent of that money on infrastructure improvements essentially. I think roadway improvements and fifteen percent for non-paying or economic development projects. Uh, for twenty twenty-three, uh, the gross amount of the Economic Development Income Tax Funds was one million, uh, two hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Those funds, consistent with the prior year, eighty-five percent was spent on infrastructure. Fifteen percent is or will be spent on economic development, non-paying projects. Uh, for twenty twenty-four, it's anticipated, uh, those, the gross funds will be one million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars. And, uh, there is a change for twenty twenty-four. Seventy-five percent of those funds will be spent on infrastructure and twenty-five percent will be used for non-paying projects. So again, uh, the state just likes to see that we have the plan and we've documented how we intend to spend the Economic Development Income Tax Funds. And I will present that to the commissioners for signature.
That, oh, make a motion to amend the edit plan from eighty-five fifteen to seventy-five twenty-five. Break second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Yes, again, I do have another ordinance that we need to adopt. Or, well, that's a resolution, that's an ordinance. Uh, it's the ordinance that we have mentioned a couple of times in the past where we are, uh, shifting or adding to the enforcement of the lock requirements for, uh, sites not served by sanitary sewer. Currently, there is a requirement in the planning and zoning ordinances as well as the health code ordinances that, um, says site requirements for homes not served by sanitary sewer. If served with community water distribution systems, there shall be a minimum size of three-quarters of an acre lot. And if served with individual water supply systems, one acre lot shall be required. The purpose of this ordinance is to, uh, move those, that requirement to the building code regulation. So it can be enforced through the building code. And we've mentioned that a couple of times in the previous meetings. And it took me a while to get the, the proper language ironed out with Chris. And Chris Boling is the executive director at the health department, as well as Travis Elliott, who is in charge of the building department and who will be enforcing this. It doesn't add anything, it just moves the enforcement mechanism from the health department and/or planning and zoning to the building department. And, uh, the ordinance. Anybody's welcome to copy of it if they'd like.
I'm gonna say accept it. You make a motion that we amend this ordinance? I just made a motion. Break second, all favor say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Anyone else done? Come here. President?
No.
Two? Break second, flag. Come on.
Aye.
Er, just one.
No good, no good.
That's all right?
Good.
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, update on the medical and ancillary lines of insurance for the county. Uh, Delta Dental, that renewed is coming up on seven one. We had moved the dental envisioned last summer. Uh, we locked in a two-year lock rate with that. Prior to that, that move, um, Pam and I had reached out to all the local providers, uh, the dentist's office, just to see what fit best for everybody and to give the most options to all the employees. And by far, uh, it was Delta Dental. So that's, uh, we, we went down that road and, uh, we moved all of that over to Delta Dental. So you have two-year locks of seven one earnings, um, same rates. The, uh, there will be an open kind of enrollment for the employees if they decide to jump off or, um, change or add Delta Dental and Vision through V S D. Uh, but the other thing that I was wanting to bring up is I reached out and sent off all the information to United Healthcare, uh, Anthem and Allstate Benefits for the group medical insurance. Allstate Benefits. Uh, they used to be National General Benefits, um, Allstate purchased, now it's National General. Uh, so far, getting great responses, um, and the reason being, um, there's a premium versus claims, it's called a, uh, medical expense ratio. And in twenty twenty-one, your ratio is only forty-nine point seven-two percent. What that means is, uh, more premium, uh, and less, and there's less claims. So, uh, obviously the, the carrier is winning that up. In twenty twenty-two, it went slightly to fifty-three point eight-one percent. Still really, really good, uh, on that medical expense ratio. So, um, with those past two renewals during those timeframes, you guys have been with Humana for a very long time. Uh, we all know Humana is, uh, jumping off the, the group benefits. The, uh, Humana offered two years ago a no-shot guarantee to you all. And that was with a flat in, in increase, so zero percent increase two years ago. Uh, which is great, uh, because on average, on the medical, medical group side, you're looking at an average four percent increase each year. And that's just been a steady, um, factor. Last year, or this past year, they came back with another no-shot guarantee and they offered a negative three percent renewal. So it actually went down, uh, the rates, uh, per member or whatever, per, uh, employee dependence at all of them went down three percent, uh, which is not great. I mean, that's, that's, it's hard to say, uh, no to. So percentages, what is that, you know, what does that mean? Uh, twenty twenty-one total premium paid for the county was one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. That was in twenty twenty-one.
Say it one more time, Zach.
One million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-two. In twenty twenty-two, it was one million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-two. It did, it did go up, but it always varies with employees. Do they have their dependents, is there a new hire? Uh, so that, the premiums always kind of fluctuate. Uh, but from the early conversations I've had, uh, I believe, uh, Washington County is in a great spot, not only to save money, but also potentially to get better benefits, uh, on the medical side. So, um, I'm really pretty excited. I should receive the next, or these quotes in, in the next seven to ten days. So I should be able to know where you will stand. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm banking on there's gonna be some substantial savings, uh, for you guys and the employees. That's about all I've got right now, uh, but I wanted to give you an update on, on how that's all going.
Okay, so we don't. Final numbers by August?
Oh, you'll call that final firm numbers the first Tuesday of next month.
So we're okay then?
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, that's, uh, that'll be easy to give you guys firm numbers. Uh, off-cycle moving, like if you wanted to move off-cycle, uh, that can be done. And all of these carriers, what they'll do is, you know, with employees, they've already left so far, they're deductible for the year. That's all gonna be credited to that new carrier. So there's no, no issues, uh, when you would move off-cycle. That would also benefit.
I haven't seen a benefit, changing cycles.
The, one of the benefits of would-be moving off-cycle would be for you guys, for your budget. Uh, it's always hard to get that number in. If you all would move off-cycle, that would obviously alleviate that, that issue. But, uh, yeah, yeah, it'll all come down, um, savings, kind of, so, so I'll just see where that, where that lands.
Appreciate it.
Sounds encouraging.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, very good.
Yeah, savings, right? Right now.
It's unusual, you know, someone can do that.
What's that?
Check.
I checked, okay, well. Uh, you ask every time.
Thank you.
Do you all have any questions?
Who were the three providers you reached out to? I'm sorry, Allstate Benefits.
Allstate, uh, Benefits, Anthem and United Healthcare. Uh, with Humana, um, getting out, that's, uh, states never, they use that.
You said, you meant, no doubt.
Uh, yeah, 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 it's, it's, um.
You said we're in January.
Well, you're, you're on one-one right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So everything's all right, up to win?
Yes, yeah, yeah, everybody's benefits are, are good to go all the way up to that.
Got it.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Break, have anything? Tom?
No, sir.
President?
No, sir.
Edit, chairman? Please do the chairman.
What?
Break, I'm good.
Okay. President, make a motion, second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.